Good evening. I'd like to call the council meeting of Monday, May 15, 2023, to order. If I can have our city clerk please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Tharp.
Present.
Councilmember Dugos absent. Councilmember Diaz. Councilmember Busque is also absent. Mary Havacoram.
I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral power.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Noble, Councilmember Tharp, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes 3-0. Comments from the public for agenda items only. Is there anyone wishing to speak on any agenda items? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing none, we're moving on to our special business today. And I'm looking around, I apologize. We are supposed to be having a presentation, our legislative update from the Honorable State Representative David Silver's District 89. I don't see him. I don't think we have anybody from his staff here. So what we're going to do, we're probably going to go get back to that presentation if he walks in. But we're going to move to our next presentation, which is a legislative update from the Honorable State Representative Catherine Waldron, District 3. I know she's not here, however, we have a representative Clint Striker. Striker, if you want to do the update for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to be here with Rep. Silver's. He's not here yet. And you all, thank you for having us here. My name is Clint Striker, and I'm Representative Waldron's legislative aide. The representative could unfortunately not make it tonight. She had a last-minute dental procedure. They can only do today, so that's why I'm here in her place. I'm looking forward to telling you all about the highs and lows that we endured together in Tallahassee this session, as well as some of the legislative victories of our own and some bills that we were able to get passed for the great folks here in District 93 and all Floridians. So let's jump right in. Rather than focusing on critical economic issues, the GOP's supermajority predictably wasted taxpayer dollars by waging divisive culture wars that do nothing to help alleviate the financial pressure that everyday Floridians are feeling. Floridians are worried about affordable housing, Medicaid expansion, relief for small businesses, and rising property insurance rates. These anti-LGBTQ bills, along with the recent passage of the six-week abortion ban and permitless carry in Florida, divert attention from the economic challenges that everyday Floridians face. Every Floridian deserves the freedom to be healthy, prosperous, and safe. And none of these bills accomplish that. That being said, we did have our own success with our local bill that unanimously passed both the House and the Senate. It's waiting for Governor DeSantis's signature. That's the Act to Improve the District, which will benefit those who live and take part in the beautiful recreation that Wellington has to offer, as well as the passage of our bill, HB 1355, which is also SB 264, interest to foreign countries, which prevents foreign governments and agents from these countries of concern from buying up land or military bases and critical infrastructure. This bill is anti-CCP or Chinese Communist Party. It's not anti-Chinese. This bill protects Chinese-Americans from being harassed and surveilled by the CCP, as well as American citizens. It's an important bill. It's protecting our constituents, the Asian-American community, and all citizens of the great state of Florida from surveillance, harassment, and data collection from foreign governments. This bill also bolsters our food security and protects sensitive health information from ending up in the wrong hands overseas. Permitless carry, which is HB 543, permitless carry unfortunately did pass. So nobody needs any training. An open carry, we're hearing, may be next. And fortunately, the age restriction bill that attempted to lower the age to purchase a rifle from 21 to 18 died in the Senate. But we think it may come up again. And legislation's won the head's home for both Representative and I. You know, as the old saying goes, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. The 21-year-old provision of the original bill, it's proven to be effective in preventing mass shootings. You know, yet here we are again. There's no reason for an 18-year-old kid to be running around with a military-grade assault weapon and to have such readily available access to these lethal instruments. I worked for Senator Rader as a legislative aide when the tragic Parkland shooting happened. It was our district, and I was doing constituent services at the time. I spoke to all the families who endured this trauma. And it's frankly sad to see members trying to do all the progress that was made for these families that's kept us all safe from these heinous mass shootings. More guns in our community does not make us safer. Taking away background checks and training requirements is a recipe for disaster. And Floridians want common sense, excuse me, gun law reforms to make our communities safer. And certain Republicans have traded our safety for an A-plus NRA approval rating. And as far as election voter suppression, we saw HB 7067 and CS SB 7050, which passed along party lines. For many Floridians, the bill's reforms will make it harder to register to vote, disenfranchise certain voters, and decrease access to the voting process. It'll also impose undue burdens on community, or excuse me, on county and state officials, agencies, and resources. We attempted to curtail some of this with HB 1249, which was the limited English proficient voter assistance. This would have required the supervisor of elections to provide language-related assistance to limited English community proficient voters. This was shot down by the GOP's supermajority from becoming law. And it just is an example of some of the voter suppression that's taking place that we're seeing that we're up against. As far as local preemption, we also saw some attempts to limit local control, like banning pride flags, HB 1011, SB 668, and preemption of the local government, which is SB 170 and HB 1515. Not only is this un-American, but it seemed to be pretty unconstitutional, both on its face and in practice. And then we saw, excuse me, the homeowners insurance. The governor knows that it's not fixed. So we're going to likely have homeowners insurance 4.0 next session or earlier in special session. So we've now had two special sessions to address the housing insurance crisis in Florida. And yet, no one here can say my rates went down. So they passed the laws that they say, you know, that might slow increases or lower costs in one to two years. That's unacceptable, considering many Floridians are paying the highest cost for insurance in the country. And we didn't get into this mess overnight. They've had time to fix it, and yet we still don't have a solution. And the Democratic Caucus created a bill to more aggressively tackle the problem and to immediately provide relief to Floridians. And the GOP majority decided that we wouldn't even hear the bill, so it went nowhere. And then we have the anti-immigrant bill, which as Florida's economy has always used undocumented migrant labor. Our agriculture, construction, and hospitality industries would not be the powerful economic engines of the state without this plentiful and hard-working labor force. And undocumented persons seeking a better life are willing to do the grueling and low-paying, no-benefits job that many native-born U.S. citizens will not. And it's wrong to profit off these undocumented persons for years. And then we, as the legislature, turn around and demonize these people for voting. And there's found there's much better, more humane ways to address the root causes of mass migration, such as investing in education, job training, excuse me, in economic development in countries of origin. SB 1718 does not address these issues and could make the border situation worse. Immigration must be solved at the federal level. And SB 1718 is an unreasonable and politically-driven anti-immigrant bill that would have negative effects on Florida's economy, society, and our reputation. And next we have here some of the anti-LGBTQ and gender bills in K through 12. These Republican-passed bills aimed at marginalizing our LGBTQ-plus community and taking away more of our residents' freedoms. Predictably, these bills embrace big government overreach. And these bills will tell them how to dress, which bathroom they can use, and what healthcare they're allowed to access. Some of the DEI legislation that we saw today. Governor DeSantis signed SB 266 and HB 931 into law, prohibiting degrees in, excuse me, Critical Race Theory, or CRT, and other majors, minors, and programs that promote diversity, equality, and inclusion. It's pretty remarkable to see that, you know, this once anti-big-government party is leading the charge in this overt, big-government-style insertion into our classrooms and even our bedrooms. I think Ronald Reagan would probably be turning over in his grave. And as far as the culture wars, we're seeing some bans in college and university spending on diversity, equity, and inclusion programs and activities. It limits freedom in general education courses, and it affects the way that history is taught in Florida. This is hurting Florida's brand as a place to get a good, high-quality education. And these extremist partisan assaults on higher education puts our college and university at risk from going from world-class to class clown. Now, some wins that we've seen, period tracking. The FHSAA, the Florida High School Athletic Association, did have a proposal that would have required girls playing the sports to report the information about their period to be kept on a form at school. That was an outrageous and unacceptable suggestion. After a massive public outcry, including a letter from the House Democratic Caucus and many calls and letters to the board from Floridians, excuse me. They wisely admitted their mistake and backed down. We all collectively raised our voices against something, and we stopped it.
Clint, can I give you two more minutes? I have--
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Just a few more, as far as federal wins goes. The Dems have delivered the insulin cap. Diabetic seniors on Medicare have the out-of-pocket cost for insulin's cap at $35 a month. It's a huge cost savings, especially for retired people on a fixed income. Which, by the way, the Republicans blocked a provision in the law that would have created a cap for everyone in private insurance who needed to buy insulin. And as far as unemployment, we have record job creation. Overall, our nation's economy is strong, and that lays the foundation for Florida's success. And as a tourism state, our economy is tied to people in other states and countries being successful enough to vacation here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if anybody wants to talk to Clint, I'm sure he'll make himself available.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and now we're going to jump back to our first item here. Legislative update from the Honorable State Representative David Silver, District 89.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Sorry for my tardiness. Can you hear me? This is on?
I can hear you.
Sorry for my tardiness. I heard that you may have gotten already a slight legislative update, so thank you very much. So sorry I was a little late. I don't know if you touched on taxation. Did you talk about the-- no? Okay. So HB 7063 is a bill that passed this past session. It wasn't all bad. There's some good stuff that came out of this past session. Last year, we had a short tax holiday on diapers and other baby, on other toddler and baby items. This bill created a permanent tax exemption for certain baby products, clothes, diapers, adult incontinence products, or hygiene products, machinery and equipment to produce renewable natural gas, certain agricultural fencing, and small private investigative services. I don't know. If you could tell me how that all ties together, I'd love to hear it. The bill also provides a one-year tax exemption for certain MG certified appliances and a one-year exemption for gas ranges and cooktops, and a 13-month reduction for the business rent tax. So could help out in our economy moving forward. The bill also creates a tax credit for home builders that purchase and install residential gray water systems and for companies that purchase machinery for use in the production of human breast milk fortifiers. Like I said, if you can find a connection to any of that, that'd be very impressive. I believe you touched on the six-week, well, the abortion legislation, or no? Senate Bill 300, did you touch on that? All right, I'm going to go a little bit into detail with that. Last year, we passed a 15-week abortion ban. This year, it's six, with an exemption for incest and rape. Let that sink in a little bit. It's a tough pill to swallow here. So this bill, Senate Bill 300, Pregnancy Parenting Support prohibits physicians from knowingly performing or inducing a termination of pregnancy after gestational age if fetus is determined to be more than six weeks rather than 15, with exceptions, providing the exception, a woman obtaining the abortion is doing so because she's a victim of rape, incest, or human trafficking. Subject to certain conditions requiring that medications intended for the use in a medical abortion be dispensed in person by a physician. The bill prohibits abortion after six weeks of gestation unless an exception is met. Current law exceptions to abortion timeframes are maintained, and a new exception is established for cases in which the pregnancy is the result of rape or incest. I don't know if you heard every word that I just said, but when people tell you it doesn't really matter when you go to vote, it matters. So another bill that passed this past legislative session has already been signed into law by the governor. HB 269, Public Nuisances, makes defacing or damaging religious cemeteries, projecting images of hate against a certain religion or against a religion on private property or harassing someone for religious clothing a third-degree felony. This measure was introduced to address the rise of antisemitic actions and displays across the state of Florida in the past year. And lastly, HB 543, Public Safety, removes the requirement for Floridians to obtain a state-issued license or permit in order to carry a concealed weapon or firearm. It is consistent with the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. The bill does not affect laws relating to the purchase of a firearm and will not allow anyone prohibited from possessing a firearm to carry one concealed. The bill does not affect the prohibition on carrying firearms in certain restricted areas like schools, certain athletic events, correctional facilities, and among others. The bill leaves in place the current licensing process and background screening so that those who choose to obtain a permit for reciprocity or other purposes are free to do so. Florida continues to require full and complete background checks when a firearm is purchased. So that's just a quick update of what happened in this past session, policy-wise. I want to talk about a few bills that I passed that are waiting in the governor's pen, that I'm proud that have passed. Past seven years, this is my seventh year in the legislature, my focus has been on mental health, specifically mental health for children, and giving a voice to those children in our foster care system that don't have a voice, that perhaps could be high utilizers of the Baker Act. If you're not familiar with the Baker Act, it's a very traumatic experience, to say the least. Oh, who's that? No, that's good. So this past session, I passed, I believe, my fifth mental health bill. HB 829, Operation Administration of the Baker Act, requires the Department of Children and Families to provide specified information to certain individuals and organizations and to maintain an information handbook and repository of answers to frequently asked questions. So basically, there is a Baker Act handbook that those that initiate or administer a Baker Act refer to. And DCF is supposed to provide updates to those. Well, they haven't been required to. This would require updates annually to the Baker Act handbook. It's an important piece that is used in the initiation of a Baker Act. This is a very traumatic experience for an individual, an adult or a child. You want to make sure that if somebody's liberty is being taken away from them, that information that they're referring to is properly updated. So this bill is passed, and it's being, it's passed both chambers and is awaiting the governor's signature. HB 537, Custody and Supervision of Specified Offenders. So our state attorney, Dave Ehrenberg, brought this bill actually to me. He represents all the state attorneys in the state of Florida, I believe, at the time he did when he brought this piece of legislation. If you are convicted of a sexual assault in the state of Florida, you are not eligible for gain time. You can't get out early for good behavior, incentive gain time, or whatever. But if you are convicted of attempted sexual assault or plead down to sexual assault as an attempt, you can. This would close that loophole. That is awaiting the governor's signature. HB 515, Officer of Inspector General of the Board of Governors of the State University System. About five years ago, we had a little incident at the University of South Flor-- the University of Central Florida. I don't know if anybody remembers that. About $10 million went missing. There was an investigation, and the inspector general for the Board of Governors could not subpoena the records of where the money went. This would give the inspector general that power. And that is also awaiting the governor's signature. We also had a record budget. Did you speak to the budget at all? We had a record budget of $117 billion this past session. I'm going to go over each silo really quickly, because I'm sure you have a very packed agenda. Of $117 billion for this upcoming budget that will be signed into law by the governor or be signed in by, will be signed in by the governor on July 1st or by July 1st. We have $30 billion, $300 million for our education silo. Health and Human Services, $47.26 billion. Criminal Justice and Corrections, $6 billion. $22.7 billion Natural Resources. And $10 billion for Transportation and General Government. And $700 million and change for the judicial branch. And this year, I was able to get almost $5.5 million in the budget. And I'm proud to say I was able to get two budget items for the city, totaling almost 1.0, oh, just over 1.5 million for the Swain Boulevard Sewer Extension, phase one. $600,000. And then for the City of Green Acres, we have the youth program, $950,000. Those are just a little bit of what we did up in Tallahassee the last few months. And I'm here to serve. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Representative Silver, on behalf of the City of Green Acres, we want to thank you for having sponsored those two bills. It's not the first time that you have sponsored them, but hopefully the governor will sign them, and we will get funding to. And you see some of the youth here that this will impact. So we're extremely thankful of being able to receive that and expand our services to our community. And obviously, septic to sewers is something that we have been wanting to do for the original section for a long time. So thank you so much for your efforts, for being a champion of the City of Green Acres. We are truly thankful.
Any questions or--
I don't think so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
All right. Ooh, this is a good one. Presentations. We have a 2023 Educational Scholarship Awards, and we have the Education Scholarship Chair, Councilmember Susie Diaz.
Cheat sheet is now electronic. Mayor and council members, I am so honored to be here tonight to help present the scholarships that you so wonderfully have provided and have supported throughout the years. This year, we were able to provide 10 scholarships. We had a total of 25 applicants. 18 of those applicants qualified for the interview round. Interviews were held, and I got to tell you, and I can say it's the consensus of those that were on the committee with me, this was a tough year. The accomplishments of these children independently is enough to make any one of us look at our CVs and feel completely unaccomplished. They have done so much already in their short time, and it's really inspiring. Students, you inspire us, so thank you for being a part of this process. I would like to start by thanking Ms. Michelle Thompson, Ms. Marice Aviles, and Mr. Gene Francis for your help. These are the three musketeers behind the scenes that are compiling applications. Now, each one of these applications, it's not just the application. There's letters involved. There's transcripts. There's quite a bit that goes into each one of these, so thank you so much for all the hard work that you've done behind the scenes. I'd also like to recognize our committee members. I did see Mr. Smith here with us today. So we do have Mr. Smith, Dennis Smith, Mr. Chuck Shaw, Ms. Roxana Gale-Hunt, Ms. Arlene Spagna, and our newest member, Ms. Shalana Brown, and our newest alternate member, Ms. Woodline Pierre, who were also a part of this process. So I would like to thank you all so much for your help. Oh, there you are, Arlene. And as I said, it was definitely not an easy feat. So without further ado, the reason we are here, it is my honor to present the educational scholarship recipients for 2023. And we will begin with Kensley Clark of Lake Worth High School. Kensley was also designated as the Denise Paget Memorial Scholarship Award, which is for athletic excellence. Kensley, are you, Kensley, are you here? Yeah, okay. Next, I would like to present to Ashley Jacendes Gonzalez from John I. Leonard High School, who receives the Norman Rose Memorial Scholarship Award for Outstanding Community Service. Now, just to let you know, I don't even, I didn't even think you could tally that many hours of community service in such a short time, but you really did a phenomenal job. Thank you. Next, we have Nathaniel Barrows from Palm Beach State College. Delilah Batista from Palm Beach Central High School. Mario Dali from John I. Leonard High School. I believe Mario was not able to join us today. And Luciana Fabrega also, I believe. Oh, Dad made it, okay.
Her mom and dad are her brothers.
Okay, so who would like to come up on her behalf? Luciana's with Jupiter Christian. From Santa Lucius Community High School, we have Mr. Lath Hilo.
Congratulations.
From Suncoast High School, we have Ms. Camila Rubi. From Palm Beach Gardens High School, Gianna Williams. And from John I. Leonard High School, Ashley Martinez Diaz. Mayor, council members, I present our 2023 Educational Scholarship winners.
Get rid of the laptop.
Yeah, we want to bring everybody together.
Okay, here we go. Now, time. Close your eyes on three. One, two, three.
All right. We're moving on to our next item, and we have a proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Week. If I can have our city clerk please read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, proclaiming May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. Everyone experiences times of stress and struggles in their lives. One in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 to 18 experience serious mental illness over the course of their lifetime, with millions of people affected by mental illness in any given 12-month period, including 21% of adult population. The City of Green Acres recognizes the impact of awareness and education as its service, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the systems of care. Therefore, the City of Green Acres proclaim May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you.
All right. And today, to receive the proclamation, we have CEO of NAMI Palm Beach County, Catherine Murphy.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. I really appreciate all the efforts that you've done in the City of Green Acres to promote the mental health and well-being of the residents. And Palm Beach County, we're recognizing the month throughout every municipality, and we'd like to invite you all to take care of your mental health and well-being this month. We have a special campaign. It's called Get Your Green On. You can find out more at GetYourGreenOn.org. We're encouraging everyone to wear the color green because it's the national mental health color. And this Thursday, we're going to have a big event at the Arts Warehouse in Delray. Sorry, it's not in Green Acres. Maybe next year. You can invite us to do some more events. But we hope that you all can recognize the importance of taking care of your mental health during this important month. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is National EMS Week, which is celebrated May 21st through the 27th. And if I can have our city clerk please read that proclamation.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, proclaiming May 21st through the 22nd, 2023, as National EMS Week. Emergency medical services are a vital public service. The members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Therefore, the City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim May 21st through the 22nd, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS, where emergency care begins, and encourage residents of Green Acres to observe the week with this appropriate program, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Excellent. And to receive the proclamation, we have the fire rescue team. Please come up. And our next, in our last special business today, we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week, which is also celebrated May 21st through the 27th. If I can have our city clerk please read the ordinance by title.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, proclaiming May 21st through the 22nd, 2023, as National Public Works Week. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the public of Green Acres. These infrastructure facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employers at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. Therefore, the City of Green Acres do hereby proclaim May 1st through the 22nd, 2023, as National Public Works Week. Thank you.
And to receive the proclamation, we have the Director of Public Works, Carlos Sudeño. Any team members that are here with you? All right. Next, we're moving to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Council Member Diaz, second by Council Member Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
All right. Motion carries 3-0. It's a low-scoring affair today. We don't really have anything for a regular agenda. Moving on to our discussion item. The discussion item today is the 100th Anniversary Planning Committee, and that's going to be led by City Manager Andrea McHugh.
Thank you, Mayor. While it may seem like it's pretty far out, May the 24th of 2026 will be here before we know it. And we would like to start preparing for the city's 100th anniversary, and in doing so, we'd like to establish a planning committee, meet with each of the council members, talk about things that you're interested in potentially seeing as part of that, some of the things that we've been thinking about, that we've been collecting over the last couple of years. So I am just, at this point right now, I wanted to announce it tonight, that we are three, about three years out, and I just wanted to get support from the council to move forward with establishing a planning committee so that we can have an amazing event here on May the 20, or sometime around May the 24th, 2026.
Thank you. So you're looking for guidance?
Yep, that's it. Just looking for some support in moving in that direction and everything else that would come along with establishing that committee. And we can bring back more information as we have it.
Any thoughts about the appointments for that committee?
No, not at this point. No, we haven't had any thoughts, but just looking for some direction, and then I'll come back with some recommendations.
All right. Council members, are there any comments or questions? All right. If I don't see any, then I'm going to start from my left to my right for consensus. Council Member Diaz?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, for myself. Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes.
Council Member Tharp?
Yes.
I think you have consensus.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Ma'am, you will have three minutes.
Okay, I won't take long. Good evening. My name is Jermaine St. Louis. I live at 203 Leland Lane. I have lived there since 2007. I recently, specifically, let me check the date, on the 1st, I got a violation for parking extending over the sidewalk. So my concern is, how do I, how do we fix that issue? Because where I live, there is no allowance for parking. And I feel that it should have been part of planning, expecting families to grow. With the growth, more vehicles in the driveway. One would say, well, why don't you expand your driveway? Well, expanding my driveway would not keep me from parking over the sidewalk. I have lived there for 15, 16 years, I believe. There's one homeowner in particular that has raised concern over how we park. I feel it to be unfair. If there was a way to mitigate the situation, I could see that it's a homeowner's choice. But in my situation, or in many other homeowner's situations, it's not. So I feel that that should be looked at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Victor Garcia DeRosa, 228 Leland Lane, and I am that resident. We live in a land of law and order. When I purchased my property there in August of 2018, I signed an HOA agreement that had a list of governing documents that specified that parking over the sidewalks is not allowed. This particular issue has been going on since I've lived there. The homeowners association, including past and current members of the board, have been or are in violation of not only their own governing documents of the community, but that of code for the City of Green Acres. Within our governing documents, on page 14 and page 15, there is a provision that if the homeowners association does not rectify safety issues or issues of concern within the common areas, then a resident can go ahead and make a request to the City Council of Green Acres, that they make it an agenda item to vote on actually taking over the common areas of Southwind to homeowners association for up to a year, until such time that not only the HOA Board of Directors follow the rules, but also their managing company, APM, will actually honor those rules as well. I'm not in that community to cause problems. I am in that community to live peacefully and to abide by the rules. Most of the violations are because people use their garages for things other than parking their vehicles, gymnasiums, living spaces, you name it. Okay? Again, if you sign in agreement in an HOA, you abide by the rules. If you live in a community that has code enforcement and you violate that, you are open to a citation. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Emily Jacobs Robatz. And again, I want to address the hurricane shutter issue, which I understand is a county rule. In my, I'm representing some people in my community who have received notices that their hurricane shutters could not be closed, when in fact, most of the hurricane shutters in their houses were open. They had closed the shutters in front of their garages, and left the shutters open on the other front windows and side windows, and also closed the shutters on the canal in the back, which I'm sure nobody looked at. But whoever is doing this for the city drove by and saw the garage shutters closed and gave them a citation. I just, it seems to me, from what I listened to when the fire chief gave his report, that not all the hurricane shutters have to be open as long as you could get access to the house. So if the front hurricane shutter's on the front door and the windows are open, you can certainly gain access into the house. I think that perhaps the people in the city who are issuing these violations might be a little overzealous. I just wanted to.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. All right, moving on to the city manager's report. City Manager McHugh?
Thank you, Mayor. I only have a couple of things. First is that the city, after a very long process and a couple of different tries, we, the city did finally hire an Economic Development Director. That position will be filled on the 15th of June. We are very much looking forward to her being a part of the team, so I just wanted to let you know that. And then, lastly, our Rock and Roll Sunday is, a Rock and Roll Sunday is this Sunday, the 21st, from 12 to 6:00. The, what we're most excited about, it will be the city's first annual Chili Cook-Off. As part of Rock and Roll Sunday, we're hoping to have approximately 20 teams representing different emergency, police, fire, retired organizations, and just some private groups. So we're very excited about that, so we hope everyone will come out to Community Park on Sunday, the 21st, from 12 to 6:00 p.m. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Our city attorneys, oh, are there any comments or questions from the, from the council? City Attorney's Report, Kristy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report tonight.
Thank you. And moving on to the, the mayor and city council's report, I'm going to start to my right, Council Member Tharp.
I'll never report this evening.
Deputy Mayor Noble?
Yes. The recent comments about access to house, with shutters, I'd like to bring that up because I agree. I don't recall that one would be in violation if these were windows and not access to the house. And I go so far to say, is I got a citation also, for windows that never would have been, never will become access to the house. And I don't intend to pay it, so. I go on record for that, so. We definitely have to review that lore about the shutters. The shutters are not properly defined on how that should be handled by this city. We're going to make a lot of enemies about, you know, city residents, and you may lose votes. I would say that the city council persons should be aware that people are going to be voting, and they should take it to heart that this is something serious. Thank you.
Council Member Diaz?
I am looking forward to Rock and Roll Sunday. Have the pep sit ready for the cook-off.
And for the mayor's report, I apologize for not being able to be here at the last meeting. My surgery went well. As you saw me, I'm walking a little bit better. So I look forward to being there at Rock and Roll Sunday and our first Chili Cook-Off. I'm hearing it's going to turn out pretty nice, and we're all very excited. So if you're here and you haven't purchased your tickets, make sure you do so. I believe you can do that online. Is that correct? Looking at my city manager.
Yes, correct.
Perfect. I think you can find the link on social media or on our website. There are no other comments, meeting's adjourned. Thank you.